Radio over there. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the Board of Commissioners Workshop Meeting Minute for Wednesday, October 23, 2024. Please rise for a moment of silence, followed by the pledge to the flag. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Our first order of business for next week will be the approval of minutes. Is there any questions that could be answered by either Commissioner or the Controller related to the workshop legislative or salary board meeting minutes at today's legislative or workshop meeting? Hearing none, executive sessions held between meetings. Mr. Pease?
Good morning, Commissioners. On October 22, the Commissioners had an executive session to obtain the advice of legal counsel regarding the purchase of real property, the general election, collective bargaining agreements, pending litigation, disability life, AD&amp;D insurance, sponsorships and donations, and personnel matters. In addition to the solicitors, Robert Morgan, Deputy Director of Human Resources, was present to discuss matters related to collective bargaining.
Are there any questions of Mr. Pease? Hearing none. This is the first opportunity for public participation on agenda items only. Is there anyone in the audience that wants to participate or be heard related to any agenda items? Seeing none, Directors and guests, Human Resources, Tanisha Whedon. Good morning. I don't believe there's any salary board action, but I believe there may be personnel actions today. Is that correct?
That is correct. For the personnel packet, requesting a vote for items four through seven, thirteen, twenty-six, and twenty-seven, and thirty-eight through forty-three.
Are there any questions, Tanisha, before I entertain a motion? Hearing none, I entertain a motion for the items four through seven, thirteen, twenty-six, twenty-seven, and thirty-eight through forty-three.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Douglas. We have a second. Second by Commissioner Prees. Any discussion?
The only thing I want to add is that these are prison matters. This just helps expedite our desire for workforce development there and ensuring that new COs are brought on expediently so they don't fall away to other job opportunities. So I appreciate this board's willingness to vote on these matters during a workshop.
Thank you, Commissioner Douglas. Any additional comments?
And these are all within the budget for 2024.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yep. Any additional questions? Hearing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, same sign. The ayes have it. Thank you, Tanisha.
Thank you.
Director of Budget Finance, Mr. Davis. Good morning.
I have no changes to the purchase order packet sent out earlier in the week. No questions. It'll be ready for next week.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Davis? Hearing none. Thank you so much, Mr. Davis. Solicitors' report, Mr. Owens.
Chief Clerk's report first.
I'm sorry, Chief Clerk's report, Mr. Pease.
I have nothing to report unless there are questions of me.
Thank you for making me interrupt my flow based upon your lack of a report. I will then go to the Solicitors' report for Mr. Owens.
Thank you, Commissioner Harwood. Items one through four requiring board action have been reviewed and approved by the Solicitors' Office.
I appreciate that. Is there any questions for Mr. Owens? I believe we have training matters that need to be acted on today, one through three. And at this point, I think it's in order to accept the motion on training packet items one through three.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Prees. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Douglas. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. The ayes have it. All right. Matters requiring board action. Are there any matters requiring board action that need to be pulled out and/or voted on or discussed separately? Hearing none, I entertain a motion for matters requiring board action, one through four.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Douglas.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Prees. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, same sign. The ayes have it. Former business. Any former business? I know that there's no correspondence to direct to you, but I just wanted to note that I did look for it. Is there any Commissioners' comments, Commissioner Douglas?
The only comment I have today is I know there's been broad agreement of this board to begin RFPing everything. That's been what we've said, like to ensure competition. So I guess I would like to direct our, you know, Chief Clerk, Vince, if he could maybe begin creating a list of those particular contracts that are on auto-renew or those particular contracts that are coming up for renewal soon, that we can begin, I guess, a process whereby we advertise externally. I know there's processes already in place for certain things, but some have auto-renewed since 2008, you know. And I think ensuring that we have a competitive process to procure those would be good. So I don't know if a couple of weeks is enough time for you to come back with some potential opportunities for us to begin RFP.
I can do that. The process has begun identifying some stuff for next year, but I can look to maybe some sooner renewing contracts to see if we can get something moving.
Understood. Thank you.
Additional comments?
Well, just to follow that up, is there an opportunity we could reach out to CCAP to get a template for something like this? So I'm sure this is taking place in other counties and has for years. If there's something we could follow through on similar to this. Thank you.
Any additional comments? To that end, I think we said it in the room full of business leaders today that we plan to take this route as a board and hopefully will spur some interest related to that announcement and discussion with the Congressional Services and us all being clearly on the same page related to this initiative. So is there any additional comments from the board? Anything from the Controller, Treasurer? All right. Hearing nothing. Is there any audience participation at this point? Anybody that would like to come up, public participation? Good morning.
Good morning.
State your name and address.
My name is Pam Parsons. I live on Holly Street in the city.
Thank you.
I am following up on my comments last week in which I was admonished from the dice about not understanding how government works. So in my effort to understand better how government works, one of the things that I did this past week was I went to the bid openings for the solar project at the Industrial Development Authority. The meeting lasted a grand total of seventeen minutes. There was not a quorum, which was okay because they weren't taking a vote on anything. But even though I was there, the process was very opaque. There was one bid. There was almost no discussion about the bid, except that the bidder asked for a quick settlement within thirty days. So most of the discussion was focused on how quickly can we have a meeting? When can we meet so we can act on this? And then there was a person in the room that I later found out was from NRG Controls who answered questions and commented on things during the meeting, but he was never, he was never introduced. And when questions were, when he was questioned by others, by reporters after the meeting, he suddenly said, I know nothing. I'm not talking to anyone. So I must say that process was just about as opaque as it comes. And I understand how funding comes to the counties and to Dauphin County. I understand that funding stream. What I was suggesting and the point that you missed is that the county can also put their own money, if they so choose, into mental health funding. There's nothing that says you must use 100% state, federal monies passed through. So yeah, I'm always going to advocate that you get more money, but I'm always going to look for ways that there's already money here for you to use. And as I said at every meeting, because at this point, I'm seeing the county as merchants of death, not only at what happens in our county jail, but in the way that we relate to the NRA. We are at this moment in time, since the beginning of October in 2023, we are now up to fifty-eight incidences of gun violence, including a young man who was killed just this week with an eye where I was living. I heard that gunfire. I was counting those shots. And you know what? When I was a high school student, just like we bring high school students in here, I never, I never would have thought that by the time I was an adult, I would be sitting in my house counting gunshots. I do that now automatically when I hear them. How many shots fired? And I am a lifelong resident of Dauphin County, and this is not a city problem. This is a county problem. Just like those drug overdoses in the prison, that's a county problem. That's not a city problem. So we have gaming funds, that we have other access to funds to fund things like mental health. And I'm asking you to consider things outside just our state funding. And when you tell people who come forward to make comments that, oh, this isn't the right place, you are putting a chilling effect on other people who might come forward to bring things to your attention. And while you can certainly do that, I would urge you not to. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional comments? Yes, ma'am.
Morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
My name is Andrea Brown, and I'm still currently homeless at the time. I use the mailing address for the Downtown Daily Bread. So basically, I come before you this morning to say that Dauphin County, Harrisburg, Pennsylvania, America has a problem. There is an extreme problem in this county, in the city, in this state, in America. The problem begins at the top, begins at the head. And you know, whatever's on the head trickles down to the rest of the body. And so in saying that, I wanted to bring to the attention, if you're not already familiar, that know about it. I think that it's time that a light is shined within, within government organizations like Homeland Security, Social Security Administration, the DOJ. There's so much corruption. And corruption is like cancer. It's like cancer. And if you don't cut it out at the root, if you don't get to the root, it's just going to spread aggressively. And we know what the end of that can be. I've had so many experiences in my 24 years of living in Pennsylvania. I'm originally from New York. I came here, I set out with my three small children to look for a better life, to make a better life. Got here and I was treated as an outsider, what some would say carpetbag. And my passion for people, my passion for families, my passion and love for God and for humanity, I became involved, actively involved in advocating and empowering, you know, my neighbors and anybody that would, you know, give me an ear, you know, to listen and, you know, allow me to help them a long way. From my experiences, from what I've learned, you know, through life, through life's challenges, through life's struggles. And so with that being said, that's how I met Ramona Thompson, a woman, a beautiful woman who pulled me into what she used to host was community board meetings.
Systems of Care.
Systems of Care, correct. Thank you so much. And that's also where I met you, sir. Yeah, so she brought me into that meeting. She pulled me in because I was actively involved in the community. And she, she saw my passion, you know, to empower people, to elevate people that were down, you know, the broken. It just, and I said all that to say is the corruption, again, is within. It's an internal thing, you know, and it has to be dealt with. It's time to investigate, to call them into account and to really make amends overall. And not just an amends with, with the people or even people I would, I like to call people of African descent or origin. Yeah, revisiting the thought of reparations, yes. That's what I'm referring to or alluding to. But more so, it's an overall amends with God. Because we want to make America great again. And in order to do that, I think, this is just my opinion, what I believe, it takes repentance and action of repentance and return to God. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Brown.
Thank you so much.
Morning, Commissioners.
Morning. Name and address?
Tom Connolly, 345 North Harrisburg Street, Swatara Township. I'm concerned about the change in a policy about commenting on these meetings. Right now, there's 39 people watching the meeting. Probably double the amount of people that are in the room. And I see that you can no longer comment on the meeting. And ironically, just a few meetings ago, you had the ability to comment on these meetings. So nothing.
For clarity, you're referring to Facebook comments?
Facebook comments. Yeah, the meeting's going out live right now. I'm sure everyone's aware of that. And I appreciate the fact that it does go live. That's, that's a positive change, too. But you can address this. you can address this or not, but I'd like to know at what point was the decision made approximately three weeks ago to eliminate the public having the ability to comment, ask questions, actually put anything in. The button's not even there now. But but I will say there were comments on there that have been deleted. And as a a public entity, I believe it is illegal for you to delete constituent comments during a public meeting. Ironically, those comments were deleted after a young woman took exception to one of the comments, and I'm not sure why that would be an issue. But after a comment made by the President of the Board of Commissioners in Swatara Township, Shayla Ellis, was posted, there was a comment made by someone named Shelby Rexroad that was not happy, apparently, with the comment. So they had an exchange. I have a screenshot of those comments, both on the live meeting and from from the Facebook post. And after after that person commented, the comments were removed. I don't know what role that person plays in local government, but it must be an extremely powerful person to be able to remove comments on an official meeting's Facebook post. So the next week, I posted, just to see if you could post, why are comments being removed? And now the comment button is removed. This comes at a time where the news is reporting potential issues here, where we're looking for transparency, where we're looking to make some corrections of possibly things that happened in the past that may not have anything to do with any of you. But when we hear at meetings that things may have been done wrong, when we see in the paper that the F B I is investigating things, when we find out that people here may have used their position to financially benefit them, that's not the time to stop the comments. That's the time to encourage the comments. You don't know who's out there with information that you could very well need, that that your solicitor could very well need. So let's just think about this. Eliminating the comments doesn't correct the wrongs of the past. If those wrongs were in the past, you should want the solutions. Eliminating the comments now makes it look like you don't want the solutions. You don't want the answers. You don't want the questions to be asked. And I would really appreciate it if you allowed the comments to go back on, if you get with your I T department and whoever handles this, and post comments that were there. Because we saw this with another elected official who removed comments, and then it went through court, and they were ordered to put them back on. You can check with your solicitor, but to allow comments at a public meeting and then pick and choose which ones stay is not legal. So I appreciate the correction. I'd like to see the comments restored, and hopefully by the end of the day, I'll be able to comment on this meeting. So thank you, everybody. Have a good day.
But he's referring to my wife, which is, what was that?
Well, I guess I have a, I have a a question based upon those allegations is who has the authority to remove the comment section on the county Facebook page? I was unaware that was done.
I'm I'm equally unaware. I was not aware that we removed the capability to comment.
I will discuss with the I T, Acting I T Director after the meeting.
Got it. I have oversight of I T and was unaware.
No, you're fine. You're fine. Greetings, ladies and gentlemen, fellow citizens of Dauphin County, Chairman, Commissioners, those watching online and those here in the presence with us. I'd like to preface with this. For the last three meetings that I walked in the door here, it is troubling, as this young lady eloquently stated, that the unhoused in Harrisburg City and around Dauphin County, and the resources that this county and this city have developed, and there are still individuals within this county that are unhoused. And it's very evident, because all you have to do is walk outside these doors by the fountain, and you will see the unhoused outside sleeping. It's concerning that the amount of money that passes through this local government isn't utilized for the community. That's just one topic that I wanted to discuss here, but more importantly, I think she hit the nail on the head when she said about corruption. So for me, today I come before you to address the matter that weighs heavily on our community. And that's the recent corruption allegations against former and current county commissioners. These are not just accusations. They are called for all of us to action. They re they reveal what we would consider a troubling truth. And that troubling truth is a syndicate operating covertly within the local government here, undermining our democracy and exploiting the very people that are meant that it's meant to serve. This syndicate operates with troubling senses of impunity, shielded by a network of elected officials who have lost sight of their duties. The public trust is eroded, and our faith in the system is at stake. We must come together to confront this reality head on, to expose this corruption and to eradicate the head of the syndicate. We must root out not just the symptoms of this corruption, but the disease itself. As we seek to address these issues, it is essential that we emphasize the importance of inclusivity among all Commissioners and the governance of this county. A healthy functioning government thrives on diverse perspectives and a commitment to serving the entire community, not just select interests. We cannot afford to have leadership that is divided or beholden to special interests. It is our duty to choose the residents over these special interest groups, to prioritize the voices of the people we represent. Our community is diverse, yet we continue to see marginalized minorities disproportionately affected by the policies and decisions in our government. It is imperative that we work to reduce these disparities and ensure that every resident, regardless of their background, has equal access to opportunities and resources. Protecting their rights to suffrage is not just a legal obligation. It is a moral imperative. When we allow corruption to fester, we understand the very foundation of our democracy. We create a climate where the voices of the few drown out the voices of the many. We must commit ourselves to transparency, accountability, and justice. It is not enough to address these allegations in isolation. We must also create systems that prevent such abuse of power from occurring in the future. This is a pivotal moment for Dauphin County. We have the opportunity to rise above the politics of division and corruption to forge a path forward to a brighter, more inclusive future. We need leadership that is fearless in the pursuit of justice, leadership that recognizes the importance of every resident's voice. Let us be clear. This is not just about a few individuals or a single political party. This is about the integrity of our entire community. It is about ensuring that every citizen feels valued and heard. It is about about creating a culture of trust and respect within our governance. Together, we can hold our elected officials accountable. We can demand transparency and integrity in our leadership. We can ensure that the decisions made at this county level reflect the needs and aspirations of all residents, not just the select few. As we move forward, we have to commit to working collectively to address the issues of corruption and inequality. Let us champion policies that promote inclusivity and that protect the rights of all residents. It is time to stand united, to confront this syndicate operating within our county and create a government that truly reflects the values and needs of our diverse community. As we together confront challenges before us, I'd like to give you a profound thought from Cyrus the Great, who said, "Success should always call for showing greater kindness, generosity, and justice. Only people lost in the darkness treated as an occasion to greater greed." Cyrus understood the true success is not measured by accumulation of power or wealth, but with the impact we have on others. It is in a time of achievement, whether as individuals or as a community. We must choose to uplift those around us to embody the principles of kindness and justice that create a thriving society. When we succeed, it should inspire us to serve at greater humility and compassion. It should motivate us to share our resources, to advocate for those who are marginalized, and to ensure that every member of our community benefits from a collective achievement. This is a stark contrast to those lost in the darkness. Allow success to breed, corruption, and division. In our fight against the corruption that has plagued Dauphin County, let us remember Cyrus's words. As we seek to uproot the influences that have distorted our governance, we must do so with a committed kindness and justice. We must not strive to create a culture where success is not an excuse for exploitation, but a reason to extend our hands in support of one another. Let us be the light in our community, guiding each other towards a brighter future. Where inclusivity reigns and every resident feels valued and heard, by embodying these values, we can ensure that our successes contribute to greater good, fostering a community where everyone can thrive. Together, let's embrace this responsibility. Let's ensure that our governance reflects the principles of generosity, kindness, and justice, and we rise above the darkness of corruption. By doing so, we can build a more equitable and hopeful future for all residents of Dauphin County. I'd like to say this as I close. Let us remember the fight against corruption today, and injustice begins with us. We must be vigilant, engaged, and proactive in the efforts to build a better future for Dauphin County. Together, we can reclaim our democracy and ensure that every voice is heard, and every vote counts, and every resident is in town. I appreciate your time. Thank you for allowing me to comment. Have a nice day, Commissioners.
Thank you, Ms. Shill. I don't think we got your address.
Six thirteen Barber Drive.
Thank you.
That's in Swatara Township.
Appreciate it. Is there anyone else that wishes to come forward related to public comment? All right, hearing none, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
A second?
A second.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Leading adjourn.